Carlyle Local Regular School Board Meeting, Monday, May 21st, 2018 at 6:00 P.M. Would you call the roll, Mr. Bassler?
Mrs. Lainhart?
Here.
Mr. Dunkman?
Here.
Mr. Jewell?
Here.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Here.
And Mr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge? And I would like to ask Mr. John Oliver if he would please lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have student and program recognition, Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart, members of the board. We have a group of students here from the high school, some very talented artists. And I'm going to ask, as you are introduced, come down and get your certificate to make sure the board has a chance to see the quality of work. And then if you'd all line up in front for a group picture with your artwork, that would be awesome. And I'm gonna have Mr. Potter come to the podium and introduce those by categories.
President Lainhart, members of the board, thank you, Mr. Hook. We have some, like Mr. Hook said, we have some fantastic artists. And I wanted to show off their work because they work really, really hard. And I get to see it, but you guys don't get to see it on a regular basis. So I thought this was a great opportunity. So as I call your name up, please walk up, please show the board your artwork, and then line up in front like Mr. Hook said. Kirsten Butts.
Oh, that's very nice, nice.
That was awesome.
Thank you. Those are very nice.
Brianna Wilson.
Brianna's not around yet.
Calista Grimes. Summer Wheatley. Colton Kissabirth.
Colton would not be going there.
Zach Kopsi. Kylie Jensen.
Don't believe in galaxies.
Zeke Wiseman. Macy Baker. If I didn't mention it, all these nice young men and young ladies participated in the Myhamsburg Art Guild Student, what's it called, the Student Exhibition. And they all placed in individual categories at the exhibition. So they did a fantastic job. Also want to recognize their art teacher, Mr. Lytle, for helping them out. So congratulations, guys. Everybody got pictures? All right. Here we go. All right. Thank you, guys, so much for coming.
Thank you for sharing. If you feel free, if students and parents want to stay, you're certainly welcome to. But if not, if you have other things to do, that's fine. We're gonna go into the buildings and grounds report here shortly. So thank you for sharing your art with us. Awesome. That's awesome. That's some good art. Some sprinkles, if you'd like to add to our stuff. Mike, give us a quick update as...
Hello, folks. Here again. Not a lot to say, but definitely try our best to maintain what we have to get us through the next couple of years into the new building. Safety is definitely a high priority to keep things intact and keep the students safe. Very little projects to speak of. Just what we have to do and keep the heat on and so on and so forth. Would like to take about 30 seconds and make a statement about something. There's a little girl in the junior high, Myra, Maya, Myla, yeah. Ron Fernandez has been her aide for the last couple of years. That girl has made fantastic accomplishments. He is, he has no idea I'm doing this, but just from my observation, and I try to be at every building every day, so I see a lot, some good, some bad. I look at this as very, very good. The guy's very interactive with her, and she is talking and signing and communicating with others exceptionally well. So just wanted to kind of make a little statement on that. Anybody got any questions?
It's great news.
All right. Thank you. Guys, have a great evening.
Thank you.
I will, I will echo Myla. Tremendous strides. I was walking down the hall hand-in-hand with her the other day, so. And she was communicating, which up until this year, the communication was relatively nonexistent. I think she's really done a tremendous job. They all have. As far as the buildings, like I said, we don't have anything major that we're gonna be doing. We're gonna keep everything going and try to get all the potholes patched before graduation. At least so you don't fall through.
We have potholes.
I used to...
I think we lost a dog.
We just received a couple of skids, so we should, we'll get that down now, so. But anyway, thank you, Ms. Lainhart.
All right. At this time, we will move to visitor's comments. If anyone wants to say anything, they may. Seeing none, we will move on to the treasurer's report. Mr. Bassler?
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart. A few action items this month. First, I'll need approval for the minutes from the last regularly scheduled board meeting, which was April 23rd.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Second is the financial report, as you received part of your packet. I'll get into some more financial specifics in my next item, but I need an approval for the financial report as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next item, twice a year, I get to come to the board meeting and present a five-year forecast. Once in October to begin the school year, and once in May at the end of the school year. So it's that time again. The five-year forecast was part of your packet. I don't really have a whole lot of specifics to talk about with the five-year forecast, because nothing really changed a whole lot from October. Still looking very good. I guess the biggest change was we were able to pass our renewal levy. But as I talked about before, when I presented it in October, I had it included in there, because that's just the way I presented it to you. I was expecting it to pass. Maybe I took a few liberties on that, but that's the way that I made the presentation. So not a whole lot of changes. Some of the good news is our income tax revenues continue to increase, which is good for our area. That means that our income in our municipality here is continuing to increase, if we're getting more dollars there. Other than that, no real surprises on the expenses or the revenues, one direction or the other. I always try to give it to you in color. Black is good, red is not so good. If you look at down the line, 6.010, which is the excess of revenues over expenses, this year, we will have more revenue than our expenses. Next year, we're projected to have more revenue than expenses. And then year three, again, with no adjustments or no changes, we will begin spending more than what we bring in. And that's when we're gonna have to really be careful, once we get to that point, because then you start eating into your carryover. It's not, it's not good to be making money as a school district, but it's also not good to be spending more than what you're bringing in. So you gotta try to find that line in between there, where you have enough money, but you're also not running for profit here as a, as a, as a school district on taxpayer dollars. So to me, that, that's the most important line. Anything after three years, I really don't even know how you can project, but this is a document that we're given, and this is what we have to do. You know, we're in the last year of a buy-in and budget, and we're gonna, we're going to be getting a new governor. So all of this could change based on a new governor coming into office and a new buy-in and budget coming into place. This is where we stand financially, which I feel we're in great shape compared to where we were not so long ago. We're in a very good financial position. And hopefully, in good financial position as we get ready to move into our, our new facility and, and not have any surprises as we move into that facility and say, oh, we need more money to, to operate this place. I'd like to be able to not have to do that. So if you have any questions, I can answer. If not, I'll need an approval.
All right. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Okay, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes, thank you. Motion carried.
And then the last thing is, every year, I have to prepare a tax budget with the county auditor. The county auditor does not take the same approach as I do. They can't assume that any levy is going to pass and a renewal. So when our tax budget was done back in February, it was done without the renewal passing. And now that the renewal has passed, I need a resolution from our board for the county auditor to change that tax budget to reflect the five-year emergency levy being passed. So that's what that is for.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McIntosh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If you don't have any questions, you may call the roll.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to superintendent's report. Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart, members of the board. Just to add one non-action item, a little bit of a construction update. We are moving and just finished schematic design phase. And the schematic design phase of this project is really where they have identified by square footage all of the areas in the new building. Okay? So you're not quite down into the weeds yet in terms of the technical building materials that comes in the next phase called design development. We are on time and on budget. So those are the two things that I think are really critical. I know it sometimes seems like it takes a while, but as we've mentioned all along, there's a, it's a year in preparation and then two years in construction. Just today, if you happen to be out there, there's probably two dozen more stakes. They're getting ready, and probably Wednesday, we'll start taking borings, soil borings of where they believe the footprint is. Okay? So you're, the footprint is now about ready to be released. So last week, we had to do some cleanup on square footage, which dictates how that footprint will actually looks. And then we'll, we'll be posting that. As soon as we get that drawing, we'll post it on the, our website. But it's exciting. It's going on schedule. So the next thing, next week, they'll actually start looking and start talking about actual materials, starting design development with the elevation or the outside structure, and start giving us thoughts on that. So it's exciting. It's a lot of time. There's a lot of people involved. We've got a great, again, I've said it time and time again, we've got a great architectural firm and construction managers that are really working well. And the other piece, since the last time we met, the project, we have always known that the footprint was gonna go on, gonna really cover the current varsity softball field. If you look down to the far northeast side of our property, you will no longer see some old dugouts, and that has been knocked down and some fencing tore out, and some cleanup, initial cleanup has taken place. So the first part of getting the new varsity softball field in has begun. So technically, there has been groundbreaking, just not on the building yet. But we gotta get that going, because obviously, the varsity will now be, is done with the field. Likely, from a timeframe, what they told me last week was the fields should not be impacted, any of the practice fields, at least through about first part of August, mid to mid-August. So camps, those kind of things should be, band camps should be fine where you're at. Once I have the actual footprint, then we can, then that tells me where the fences are gonna go up, the construction fences around it. That tells me then where we can or cannot practice. And then we'll just, we're gonna be moving around a little bit in the short term, you know, for a couple of years. It's a little bit of a pain, we get that. But the end result's gonna be outstanding. And so sometime during the fall, practice spots are gonna adjust a little bit. Our latest information right now, talking with the construction managers, is that we are looking at a, an official groundbreaking, probably at the end of August. Okay? Now, it might trickle over into it right after Labor Day. But in that area, number one, I think we wanted to make sure our kids were in school. This is a big deal. I want them all to have some fun with this. This is a neat thing for the whole community. So and at that point in time, they'll actually be ready to break the ground. So that's kind of the timeframe. So if anybody wants to know, as soon as we get back, it's gonna go into, go into motion. Okay? Do bear with us as we progress through the football and soccer seasons and where we park. Can't tell you that yet, until we get that footprint down. I'm sure it'll be in a lot of different places. It'll be all over. So but we'll be there. It'll be, it'll be outstanding. So that's what I wanted to share with you on that. So moving on to my action items, I've got quite a few, just general business items, most are summer school letters, et cetera, Washington DC trips, et cetera, for next year, no cost to the district. Approval of our graduating list, that's the most excitement, you know? That's always neat to see. We need that approval, as well as our Montgomery County service contract. We have a couple of them. So we'll bring the other ones to you next board meeting. So I need approval for the general district business items, one, A through I.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunkman. Any questions?
I do have one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The DC trip, the, the company we use isn't any way associated with that other company up north that went to...
Went belly up?
Belly up.
No.
They're, they're not affiliated in any way or anything. I didn't think they were, but I just wanted to clear that up as well.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good question. No, they are not.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any more questions? All right. If not, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Item two, A, I need approval for the administrative employment of Susan Klein as an educational consultant. She'll be working mainly kind of as a part-time basis through Thanksgiving and helping bring our new spec ed director up online.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. Any questions? You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Item three, under certified resignation, sadly, I need approval for Scott Davis, who is transplanting to Colorado. So a little jealous, but no, hate to see him, wish him well. Did a super job for us. Was a great science teacher for us here. So I need approval for his resignation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McIntosh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Item four, under certified employment, need approval under the attachment of, for all the certified contract renewals. These are the ones that typically we had done in April, but under the new laws, we've moved it to May. So and items B and C, which are, were our vacant junior high, Coral, and Assistant Band, as well as our fourth grade language art social studies teacher. We need approval for those, A through C.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Second by... Mr. Moore? And if there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Under classified employment, same thing in I for some of our classified employees, their renewals, as well as B and C for some classified subs.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McIntosh. Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes, thank you. Motion carried.
Item number six, under supplemental resignations, need approval for, again, sadly, for both of these, Randy Glover is our head varsity basketball, girls' basketball coach, and Jen Shively, drama club advisor.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunkman. If there's any questions? If not, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Item seven, under supplemental employments, need the approval for items A through D as listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Any questions?
I just want to say, I will abstain from this, since my husband is one of the coaches.
Okay. All right.
You don't have any problem now renewing?
Ask me if in the basketball season, we'd get a different answer than it would be right now. About January, I have a different opinion.
It's a good thing you're abstaining tonight.
Yes.
All right. You may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Abstain.
All right. Thank you. Motion carried.
Item E, we pulled out, obviously, for obvious reasons, approval for Donna Dunkman as first quarter mentor for Sarah Smalley, if she's in her new position. Need approval.
Do I have a motion?
Jump on it.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll. roll.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkman?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carried.
That concludes my portion.
Alright, at this time, we'll move to legislative report. Mr. Moore, do we have anything?
Nothing new to report. Looks like there's gonna be some meetings taking place concerning a lot of the items on the docket tomorrow at two o'clock. So, we should know more about where Ohio education is headed after that. So...
Couldn't they make this a little bit more convenient and have it before our meeting so you can update us?
You know, that would make it a little bit easier, but I don't think that's their intentions.
So you just say they don't care about that?
No, I did not use those words.
The CTC met in regular session on the eighth of May. And do we have any old business? Any new business? I would like to say something to Mr. Sprinkles. I really appreciate you. You don't only look over the grounds and stuff, but you, seems like you look over everything here and make sure everything's exactly the way it should be, and that means a lot to me. So, thank you. Alright, if we have, if we have no more new business anywhere, then we would, I would need a motion to go into executive session for personnel reasons with no action to follow.
So moved.
Mr. Jewell?
Go ahead.
Mr. Moore? Okay, first by Jewell, second by Mr. Moore. You may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhart?
Yes, thank you. Motion carried.
Time in is six thirty-one.
Thank you, guys, for being here.